All right, I deem it just about 7:30. I'd like to tell everyone how much I appreciate you being here this evening for the city council meeting and ask if you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Immediately following, we'll be having Deacon Norman Dyser with the Landmark Baptist Church return our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we come to you this evening, thanking you for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon the city of Bonner Springs. We pray, Lord, that you will guide the hearts and minds of those present tonight, that this meeting will be held with harmony and cooperation. We also pray that the decisions made tonight will benefit the citizens of Bonner Springs and be in accordance to your will. All this we ask in the name of your son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Well, we have some orders of business this evening to take here at the beginning of the meeting, and I'm greatly appreciative of having that opportunity to return these proclamations, our first of which is our POW MIA recognition day. Do I have any veterans here this evening that would like to represent the?
Get up there.
Mike?
And George.
And all of our veterans. Travis, you're a veteran.
George, get up there. George.
Come on, Mike.
He's gonna go. You need to go, too.
Come on.
It's an honor to stand here by all of you. Thank you very much for your service. I appreciate that. And our proclamation reads, whereas the United States has been involved in many wars, and whereas evidence, documentation, and testimony continue to raise legitimate questions regarding the faith of American service personnel missing in action or held as prisoners of war, and whereas the whereabouts and fate of many Americans who were last known alive in enemy hands, including those held in a missing, captured status, are yet to be determined, and information regarding those men has not been made available to the American people, and whereas the families of more than 35 Kansans amid hundreds across the country have long been denied access to the truth about their loved ones, and whereas the POW MIA flag is flown daily at locations across the nation in recognition of our missing men, therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2017, as POW MIA recognition day, and urge all citizens to pursue a final and accurate accounting of these Americans as a national priority by taking part in activities promoting awareness of the POW MIA issue. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. The VFW had a formal ceremony that they've asked us to have a proclamation for, so I'm happy to do it. Our next proclamation is for Fire Prevention Week, so some of you, I had to stand up and sit down, so if all the fire department representatives could come forward. Proclamation reads, whereas the Bonner Springs Volunteer Fire Department is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting the city of Bonner Springs, and whereas the U.S. Fire Departments respond to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, resulting in 2,560 civilian deaths, representing the majority, 78 percent, of all U.S. fire deaths, and whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions, and many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, and whereas these conditions contribute to a smaller window of time for people to escape a fire safely, with as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarms alarm sounds, and whereas a home fire escape plan, including two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place, provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation, and whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household and practiced twice a year to ensure everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation, and whereas in 2017, Fire Prevention Week theme, Every Second Counts, planned two ways out, effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan, and whereas an open house will be held at the Bonner Springs Fire Station on Saturday, October 7th, from noon to 4:00 p.m., for all ages to obtain fire safety information, participate in fire safety demonstrations, fire truck rides, tour the fire safety house, meet members of the fire department, and much more. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week in Bonner Springs, and urge all citizens to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the open house to support the Bonner Springs Fire Department volunteers and recognize them for their dedication to the community. Congratulations. Thank you very much, and show all of the volunteers how much we appreciate them. Now, we have a proclamation for Diaper Need Awareness Week. If I could have the on-trip representative come forward. The proclamation reads, whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families, and whereas national surveys report one in three mothers experience diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age, and 48 percent of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply, and whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of 50 diaper changes per week over three years, and whereas diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or with vouchers, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as 6 percent of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary, therefore, obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families, and whereas a diaper supply is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs, and whereas the people of Bonner Springs recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for low-income families and lead to improved health for families and their communities, and whereas Bonner Springs is proud to be home to community organizations that recognize the importance of diapers in helping to provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to low-income families through various channels. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of September 25th through October 1st, 2017, as Diaper Need Awareness Week in the city of Bonner Springs, and encourage the citizens of Bonner Springs to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and organizations which distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper need in Bonner Springs. Congratulations. Thank you very much. We also have a happy bar donation and diapers as well. Congratulations. Boys, I didn't think of that. It's beyond me. Rolling along to item number four on tonight's agenda, which is the citizens' concerns about items not on today's agenda. This is an opportunity for the citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the city council placed on our future agenda. Is there anyone that would like to stand, take the podium, and address the city council this evening about an item not on tonight's agenda? Certainly fine, we'll roll right along. Our next item is the consent agenda this evening. It includes the minutes of the September 11th, 2017 city council meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims. Is there anything to be pulled by the staff? Citizens? Council questions, clarifications? I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor Harrington, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. So moved and seconded, vote please.
Cooper?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
On to our item number eight this evening, the presentation and acceptance of the 2016 audit. How exciting is this? Staff?
Billy's Land Finance Director, Sean Gordon. With Myes Hauser Company, our auditorium.
As Billy said, my name is Sean Gordon with Myes Hauser Company. I performed the 2016 audit of the city. So tonight, I'll go through the bound copy that you have in front of you, and then I'll answer any questions as you have at the end of the presentation. So, starting with pages one and two, this is the auditor's report. If you look down at the very bottom of page one is the opinion paragraph. This is the most important paragraph of these first two pages here. For the 2016 audit of the city, we issued an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. That's just a larger way, more wordy way of saying it was the highest and cleanest opinion we're allowed to give under state and federal law, so it reflects very well on the financial management of the city for the 2016 period. Flipping forward, pages three through eight, this is management's discussion and analysis. There's quite a bit of information here, but it's kind of a narrative form of activity that happened in 2016, high points of the city's activities, and then there's also some comparisons to activity that took place in 2015 for reference. Flipping forward, pages nine and 10, these are the main financial statements of the city. These are the financial statements that most look like resemble a business's financial statements. Again, a lot of information there. At the bottom of page 10, you can see the ending fund balance of the city at 1231, 2016. Flipping forward again, pages 25 through 50, this large section of the audit report is the notes to the financial statements. Again, a lot of information here. There's information on the city's accounting policies, investments, long-term debt, capital assets, and participation in the CAPERS and KPNF programs for the employees. The information in this section is mostly similar to the prior years. There is a new note disclosure I did want to point out, and that's on page 46, and that is Note H, the tax abatement note disclosure. This is information that discloses the city's economic development and community improvement programs that the city had in place during 2016. So, tax abatement questions that arise, that's where you would want to look in the audit report. The final section of the audit report is pages 51 through 80. This is more kind of detailed information on each of the city's funds. In there towards the back is comparisons to the budget that was adopted for the 2016 year as well. There were two separate recommendation letters, pieces of paper that are separate from the audit report. We made a total of two recommendations for the audit. Of the three levels of recommendations, one to agree being the one you want to pay most attention to. The first one was the lowest, Level One, it's a controlled deficiency. The second recommendation for the library is the middle one, so something to pay more attention to. So, if you have any questions, please let me know. That's all I had for the presentation tonight.
Very good, thank you. Anything else to add by the staff? Any input from the citizens? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Harrington, I make a motion to accept the 2016 audit.
Thank you very much. Second. Questions, concerns, comments, starting down here? Sir?
Oh, I did have one question, I guess, made it down this far, about the library. What is the reasoning for the difference in how they're, I guess, what, instead of replacement value, you want them to do a discounted rate?
So, they were purchasing collection books, magazines, and so forth, and they were saying that the value of the book was $15, but they were actually paying $10, and they were recording the $15 value, so it's not an accurate picture of what they actually spent on that item.
Gotcha, so they were using a replacement value that exceeded?
Correct, yes, yeah, so we were just wanting a more accurate value.
So, it wasn't overstating the asset?
Correct, that's correct.
Nothing else from me.
Other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Cooper?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Congratulations, thank you. On to item number nine, ordinance authorizing the storm sewer improvements. Staff?
This is an ordinance that will authorize the city to make storm sewer improvements under the generally 118th, made a cost of $830,000. At the city's bottom council, Tyler Ellsworth, as well as the city's financial advisor, Abar Barryer, here, with the rest of council as well, offering answers to the question.
We're good? Please.
Audits and bonds in the same night, it's your lucky night. This is, you have two action items tonight, and I'll let Tyler go over each one individually a little bit more detail, but these are basically the first two steps associated with issuing debt for this project. After you take these two steps, then what will occur is we'll work with staff to go out to solicit bids from area and local banks for the temporary notes, and our plan is to return to you then at your second meeting in November with the actual final interest rates on the notes at hand, and at that time, you'd take the third and final step, which would be to adopt a note resolution. So, this is sort of the kickoff steps, and we'll be returning later with the actual final results of the note sale.
We're good?
I just had a couple of items to note regarding items nine and 10 on the agenda. The ordinance authorizing the improvements and the resolution authorizing the sale. The reason there are two separate items there is because, item number nine, the ordinance is a requirement under Kansas law that where you're going to pay for something with bonds or notes, that you specifically take action as a governing body, saying your intent to do so. So, essentially, that's what item number nine, the ordinance does, it says, here's the project, we intend to finance this with bonds and notes. So, that's the purpose of that action, is being requested of council this evening. Item 10 is really the resolution that spells out the particulars that the agent's covered, which is that spells out the manner in which he will work with staff and our firm as bond counsel to go out and solicit bids for the notes over the next two months. The only other item that I wanted to mention in connection with this whole project is, obviously, I think there's been some interest, not just from Bonner Springs residents, but as I understand it, from staff, residents of Edwardsville, as to the status of Riverview this area and what's going on with these repairs, and I think that what we're trying to do, and something that I wanted to make a point to mention to you as council this evening, is we're trying to take this opportunity to do this work as a chance to reach out to the city of Edwardsville and talk briefly about some of the things that are in both jurisdictions' interest in terms of work that's shared, that may be on one side of the jurisdiction versus work that's done in another. I think in the past, there may have been sort of a handshake agreement or two about who takes care of what, and this may be an opportunity going forward to try and spell out some of those things, to put some of those things in writing, because this is certainly one of many things probably that will occur up there as that area gets more built out over the next several years, so just wanted to make council aware that those discussions are ongoing, but they're pretty preliminary at this stage, so.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other input? Nothing? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing storm sewer improvements.
Second. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
What's an addition on this one?
This 800,000, what was it? That's for the whole, that 500,000 we're going to authorize tonight to the.
Sneering as well.
Okay, and the other culverts back up the road, is that all?
It's not included.
It's just for that.
It's for the two corners, very basic of this building.
Okay, later on, we're going to authorize WCI, but we're not going to have this come until November, the next meeting with the general. So, what I'm trying to say is, what's the timeline on this? It's been a while, we've told people, is it going to be after the first year now?
We'll be able to proceed with the project, we need to award the project tonight, so we'll issue a notice to proceed to the contractor, I believe it's a 90-day period for the actual construction.
So, we're going to get moving.
Yeah, I think, I think what you might be not realizing is, item number 10 authorizes the temporary notes, so we can.
So, we can get moving.
Get moving on it, that's right.
And when do we close that, Rob?
September 23rd.
It came up this weekend, I had to look it up.
When was it?
September 23rd last year.
Of last year? Okay.
A year and two days.
With a day or two.
It just seems like it's been long to all them people out there. At least we're moving forward, that's good. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sir? We're good, vote please.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now, since we have just authorized storm sewer improvements, let's move on to number 10, which is a resolution authorizing the sale of temporary notes. Any additional to add? Nothing else? Anything from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the sale of General Obligation Temporary Notes Series 2017-1.
Second.
So, moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? Doing flip-flopping here from one end to the other each time, seeing nothing else. Vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Thank you very much. On to item 11, which is the culmination of this series of motions this evening, which is an agenda item that Riverview Culvert Replacement Bid Award. Staff?
Public Works Director, we recommend to award this bid to company WCI Incorporated. bid amount is 588,000, $588,050. We did do some reference checking on them, the references came back, they are on KDOT's pre-qualified contractor list. We have not done business, or WCI has not done business with the city in the past, but we expect it to do a job. I mentioned it's a 90-day, it's a 60 working day contract, it's about, that's 12 weeks out.
Very good.
We're going to bid to WCI.
Any indication when they can be on the ground?
For two weeks, probably, after the start.
That's great. Very good, thank you very much. Anything to add by the citizens? I know for some of our citizens, this can't come sooner or not. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to award the bid for the Riverview Culvert Replacement Project to WCI Incorporated, for an amount not to exceed 588,088 dollars, 50 cents.
Second. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, starting down here.
It'd be nice to see it finally.
Yep.
Yes, it will be. Who is the references?
Lee Summitt, they did work for Lee Summitt and Ann Gardner.
Okay.
He did some work for Levitt, that's why we ran you and make contact.
Okay.
Sir?
The residents can have a groundbreaking party.
Yeah.
Sir? Vote, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
We seem to all be getting along. Wonderful, by acclamation. On to item number 12, revised IRB policy. Staff?
The revised policy would be, the only real change is here where we took out the schedule of abatement, and stated that the city usually utilizes a standard abatement schedule structured as a 50% abatement on you incremental taxes for the 10 years, but a governing body would still have authority to approve something different if necessary. This also includes the language to reference the new standard regulations, which take out certain things. It makes certain taxes ineligible for abatement, such as the.
20.
And includes removing the name of our former bond counsel and its standing organization.
Very good. Thank you. Anything to add from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the revised IRB policy.
Second. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, starting?
Yeah, I might, did the schedule that was listed, did it lock us in too much? Is that the reason for removing it, or?
It was to be a bit more aligned with area communities to utilize that same schedule, so it's 50 percent across the board, as opposed to giving off 75 percent at the beginning, 75 percent at the end, it's just a flat rate that ensures that there's no risk on the city's behalf in terms of not collecting any of that money over a certain period.
Gotcha, okay.
Does it change what any IRBs were just recently?
Vote, please.
Hurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
This does seem to bring us more in line with what the way other areas are at least being, it's being addressed, anyway. Thank you. On to item number 13, which is our city manager's report.
Just wanted to note the message board at EMC, if we're.
EMC, the EMC.
Sounds like a military.
Has been installed and is active up on Ellison Mesa, and we have some finishing touches to do around that particular area, but that is essentially leads.
That's great. Who's providing the artwork and things? Is that?
We're doing a lot of that in-house, so it's actually being brought out of our Parks and Parks and Tourism office, so Justine Smith is doing that and working with individuals who want to advertise specific events.
The one that jumped out at me was the Arts Festival.
Some of them.
The dates aren't quite big enough to read on the drive-by?
Yeah, we'll have to.
The wording process, I'm sure.
Do different things, just to make sure that they're legible.
That's great.
But it's certainly, I think, a nice addition, but also want to note, Chief Bubel, please interrupt me if you have anything additional to add to the fire department. Their annual open house will be Saturday, October 7th, from noon to 4:00 p.m., for all ages to obtain fire safety information, also participate in fire safety demonstrations and rides, as well as tour the fire safety house, and meet members of your local volunteer fire department. Also want to note as well that the Government Services Center, conversation is considering in the form of presentation. of conversations, considering you made the formal presentation of SFS findings through City Hall and police department facilities, is tenderly scheduled for Monday, October 9th, which is the next announcement meeting. And then also want to make note, there are several events, I won't go into the length of all of them. They are listed throughout. I'm just bringing up one in particular. I would like to copy with a cop. This is another initiative on our police department to charge and aid the community. And that event will be held Wednesday, October 4th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. At Third Space Coffee. Again, this is an opportunity for residents to comment if there's a issue with the law enforcement offices. And with that, I conclude.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Excuse me, we'll go on to city council items. I believe it's our turn to start down here. Sir?
Thanks, Water Department. We were getting ready to rig lifeboats for Nettleton. And they worked hard today, good job.
Nothing for me.
The only I was going to mention was the size of the lettering on our new sign. Some of those were a little bit small, but looks like that may already be in your attention, so just thought I'd add that to it.
Sir?
Oh, well, I have five minutes left, like I said last time, so I need to get some things out there. The sign could have been bigger, I believe, but there it is. Our ordinances in our city planning department says, well, you can't have it bigger. You know, if it was been better for Bonner, why not? Seems like sometimes if things are good for Bonner, we can do it, you know? Like, I'm going to tilt that lance at this windmill again on the dumpsters. I brought it up last week. I'm told why we can't do that. We're grandfathered, you know? We've got a hell of a program to offer them people, and they won't take advantage of it. 90% will pay for it. But we can't make those people cover their dumpsters up, so we don't have that kind of vibe to look downtown. And there it is, again, the planning department says, no, can't do that. You know, if it's good for Bonner, we can do it. I just don't understand that. And that's all I got on that. I would like to say, I had a great time last Tuesday night at the farm, the table dinner at the Solder Hill Orchard. It was good food and good time, that's all I got on that. Five more meetings. It's a blessing.
I was just going to say is that I think mayor was the only one, we all kind of gotten so accustomed, so, because of these great audits we get year after year, that we kind of all forgot, except for the mayor, that we really needed to thank staff for doing such a fine job.
They do.
I mean, just every year, we always get that, you know, that unqualified opinion, and it's just nice to see. Thank you.
Unmodified.
Didn't everybody say un? Unqualified.
Unmodified.
Unqualified or qualified?
Unmodified.
Okay, unqualified and unmodified.
Yeah, very qualified.
It used to be old school.
See? Old school.
He said it, not me.
It somehow depends, I would say, on the old school.
I, you're right, we often take it for granted, but we have, the city of Bonner Springs has benefited greatly from the high-level professional care that we have in our financial regards. So thank you very much. And it's not just Tilly, it's the entire city staff and the attention to details. So thank you very much. And the library is quickly on its way, having some of the corners rounded off on some of those accounting things. That's why we have audits. So that's wonderful, not a major concern. I was going to make, mention the one activity or event that's coming up that I would like to remind everyone about is the Bonner Springs Historical Trolley Tour. This is going to be, this is going to be a tour around the community put on by the Education Foundation as a fundraiser, but it's not in an old trolley. It will actually be in a modern trolley that will go around the historical parts of Bonner Springs. So just so there's no old school, we're not going old school on that. But I would like to say how much I appreciated the quick attention to the water leak on Nettleton. That road has traveled a lot. Yeah, that's a major thoroughfare in Bonner Springs. And it appeared as though some of the asphalt was buckled when I came up it. And I don't know, it doesn't seem that way now. Did they have to go into several places on the road, or?
They were out for several hours throughout the day trying to locate the actual location of the leak, so. I'll be ready to speak to what they all have to do today, if you'd like.
I think we had three, three holes kind of finally. But the water was actually running up there.
Was it really? Only in Bonner Springs. Well, the first time I went by, I thought, well, it could have been a spring pop-out. You know, there's lots of springs in Bonner Springs, higher up that hill. But the second or third time, I thought we would end up with a block-long stretch of Nettleton being completely repaved. So I'm glad that you were able to get to it and take care of it. I'm also looking forward to hosting the Windott and Johnson County Mayor's, Council on Mayor's meeting this next week. We'll have an opportunity to receive those gentlemen into our community. Bonner Springs is a major tourist destination for a lot of Kansas City, and these leaders from across Windott and Johnson County are coming to our community already. So it'll be quite a pleasure of mine to host them for our Council on Mayor's meeting. I've been happy to hear them go on about how much they enjoy other aspects of Bonner Springs, so it'll be nice to have them here for our meeting. Such things as the golf course, the Ag Hall of Fame, the course of Renaissance Festival as it fires up in the Providence Medical Center Amphitheater, which for the first time, I didn't make the mistake. But we have people from all over the Kansas City Midwest enjoying what we sometimes take for granted. So I want to let everyone know how much I appreciate it and how much I will be bragging on that to them this next time. Other than that, unless there's any questions for me? Oh, the library, yes.